I'd like to thank you for coming to the Medina Township Trustee's Special Meeting, November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The time is three thirty P M. Can I have a roll call?
Mr. Eastwood?
Here.
Mr. Christopher?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
First thing on the agenda is we're gonna do a temporary budget work session. This is not intended to be a long drawn out ordeal, just let's get round one taken care of and working with department heads. And with our past budget. This temporary budget is to allow us to get through the first quarter. In the meantime, we'll get the permanent one established and submitted. And that would be take us the rest of the year. So. My thought was to model the two thousand and twenty-three and discuss thoughts on adjustments from there. We know that some things are gonna be increased, some things, most of it's gonna be pretty similar. For starters, so. What do you think in the area of administration, we're talking salaries? We have an employee recognition line, we don't seem to understand exactly.
I think we understand.
What we're about to use it for, but I say we keep it the same, a thousand dollars. We're gonna put a thousand dollars in the employee recognition line, which is one hundred dash zero three zero six. And I think the official would be one thousand dash one ten, one hundred oh three oh six. I'm gonna put a thousand dollars. Obviously, when we get done with this, we do have our certificate. Of resources from the county and. We'll have to make sure the numbers work within that certificate. We'll go from there. Trustees' salaries, again, we're only talking about. A quarter, you know, four months. We had forty before, I think that's more than enough. Go forty. Trustee salaries, forty thousand dollars. Do I need to write, read a line item every time, or are we okay?
No, we're just.
This is just so, this is just a budget, or yeah, work session. Fiscal officer salary. Again, that's, we had it before, thirty thousand, that's nearly a full year. Just leave it alone there for what we're doing here.
Yeah, you're not, so the temporary budget is just kinda like an estimate. So, you know, you're not technically doing it for just January, February. So these numbers should be close.
Yeah, they're, we're not gonna meet them at first at all. We got one ninety line, which is salaries. And that would be, I would assume for our office staff, which we're anticipating being able to get a second person in the office someday, but that's at sixty thousand. Again, I. I think that's, that's high for the quarter, but. For a temporary basis, if this is what we used before. Go ahead and do it, sixty thousand dollars. Opers line. That's the. That's the line below, it's a two eleven, and it was thirty thousand dollars. I say we use the same line because our wages will not be as high, the opers will not be as high. Medicare? Okay. Tell me what. I might grab one, if you allow me, I'm gonna go grab one. I might have one here. Let's see. Let's stand this report back, I think I got one over here that's missed. What is that, Chrissy, September twenty-eighth is the most current status report?
The appropriations status.
Appropriations status?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Okay, I think I got one, I, I'm just wanting to make sure I'm looking at something accurate. Damn. You can leave that up here, somebody might want it. Will you guys want this over there, Denny? You got one?
I've got one, yeah.
No idea.
Okay. What we should be doing actually is grabbing the April one. Can you grab that out of, out back? This was through April. Year-to-date expenditures were about ten thousand dollars. So I don't know if we had to make an adjustment. But for that.
For which line?
Opers.
Okay.
The two eleven?
Yep.
We had it marked here from, oh, I'm, I'm a line off, I was on Medicare, my bad. Medicare is what we're looking for, six thousand. That's still way over, so. Are we, are we comfortable just leaving them like we had it, so six thousand dollars? Hospitalization. Had that at a hundred thousand. That's. Well, more than enough, I'm, I'll put it at the same thing at a hundred thousand. Other insurance. Had that at three thousand. Year-to-date, that's still more than enough, we'll leave that at three thousand. Are you guys following okay? Okay, thank you, I just. Workers' comp, the two thirty line. We had that at seven thousand. That's really overkill, or it used to be, well, might have an adjustment after this year, say we leave it at seven thousand. Unemplo- anytime you guys think I'm out of line, just say something, okay, I'm not trying to.
There's something we can adjust, but we can wait until the end.
Yeah, yeah. Unemployment comp. We had five thousand before. We, uh, we spent nothing on that this year, we could put five thousand in there, but again, that's. If we need to make other adjustments, that's a spot. Accounting and legal fees. All right.
Really should go up.
Yeah, this one, uh. This one doesn't really relate, so. The appropriation. Was thirty thousand last year.
Yep.
Considering the status of things. We are only talking the first quarter, but. Should we bump that to fifty thousand?
Yep.
We're gonna move that to fifty thousand, guys. Auditing services. Had that at nine thousand. Line straight here. Previously was fourteen thousand. I think we leave that alone. What do you think?
Why don't I have the audit going on, so we still have to do the other one.
What's that again?
This is the audit service, so. Yeah, just leave it.
Talk to me. Leave it alone, or?
Yeah, that's what I did.
Okay, nine thousand, nine thousand.
Four two.
That is, uh. Three one two auditing services for nine thousand. And that's leaving it the same. Excuse me. That's not the same, it was fourteen thousand before. Oops, that's right here. Oh, I'm sorry, well, I'm looking at appropriation temporary budget. Appropriation was the final appropriation, that's what, that's what's throwing me off, okay. Yeah, we're fine, we'll leave that at nine thousand. That's. Year-to-date, we didn't spend anything there. U A N fees. Can we get charged for that? We have five thousand. That's more than enough, I'd say leave it at five thousand. We get to, yeah. Tax collection fees. Nine thousand. Leave it the same. Three nineteen, other professional services. We got it at forty thousand.
Forty.
Just leave it the same?
Why did we use that one for?
The, it actually was, other professional services, we ended up spending five thousand last year, uh, the quarter. At three nineteen, it's used a lot for services, would that be like our, our land clearing kinda guy, is that, well, that's not for here.
Yeah, this is the, this is the head, then department, I don't know.
So that would be lighthouse?
It's not the second, probably.
Well, yeah, let's, let's not lower, because that's something that's getting gobbled up by our. Current situation either. So forty thousand. Rents and leases, twenty-five hundred, leave that alone. Travel meetings, fifteen thousand. That was more than we spent, although we didn't pay some people. I say we leave it alone, fifteen thousand. Telephone, four thousand. Again, that's more than enough, four thousand, four thousand. Feel like an auctioneer. Postage, fifteen hundred. I find that was more than enough too, didn't we, Chrissy?
Well, you might wanna rethink that, it's gone up again.
Yeah, year-to-date last year, we spent three hundred, so if we put four thousand in that same timeframe. We'll be all right. We're in postage, uh, or.
How much?
Three forty-two?
We were, I had fifteen hundred, what was it?
Fifteen.
Fifteen hundred, I'm sorry.
Yeah, four thousand was it?
Okay, fifteen hundred is still, four thousand was year-to-date, was something different, but fifteen hundred. Thank you. Advertising was two thousand. I think we leave that alone. We were just looking at that today, weren't we, Elaine?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Paycheck service charge, that line was zero before, so apparently that's covered under another. Probably under contracted services. So we would skip the. Paycheck services line, go to contracted services, which ends in the three sixty. That's fifteen thousand. That's, I say that's fine if it's okay with you guys. Payment to a political subdivision. Was thirty thousand. That's still be in good shape, thirty thousand. There's twelve pages of this, that's gonna be a pain. Property insurance, and we don't have to do it all.
Uh, was that one at?
It was at ten thousand, property insurance. That one was paid upfront, that, that's one of those as well. Twenty-five hundred year-to-date, at that time, last year, so that should be fine, ten thousand. Liability insurance, forty thousand. That looks like likewise, it should be good. Forty thousand. Office supplies, it was at ten thousand? That looks to be good. Ten thousand. Operating fuel, operating supplies, fuel, that was three thousand. It was like not even used.
All right.
Just leave it alone?
Just keep going, yeah.
Okay, three thousand. Small tools, minor equipment, was it six thousand? Yeah, we'll put, leave that at six thousand. Dues and fees, thousand. Should still be in good shape at a thousand. Other expenses, the five ninety, fifty-nine hundred, community events. We had it at ten thousand. Good with that now?
You're good with that?
Yeah, I actually like to start talking with a couple companies about sponsorships and stuff like that, and then.
Okay, no, I just wanted to make sure we have enough.
Well, we can always change it later, but this is.
This is a per.
Yeah, I don't plan to do anything.
Five ninety-nine other expenses. Now, this one, I think was one that.
Just put some money there in case we had a.
Right, it has ninety-eight thousand, we can come back to that. And we skip a line, no, we don't, we got seven forty machinery and equipment. Five thousand. We can call that good. Garbage and trash removal, two thousand. How does that handle here, guys? That's my, a mystery to me, garbage and trash removal for the admin, is that billed to service or to the fire?
I think they were billing fires, weren't they?
There's no money used out of that account last quarter, or, you know.
I just got two invoices, uh, there's the police department one and search.
Yeah, it may be coming out of fire, is there any fire?
Oh, it's fire.
It was coming out of fire for a while because that trash can is down over by the fire department.
I mean, we can put it in there now like we have, but is that something moving forward we should make an adjustment for, if there is no fire?
Yeah.
Here. That make sense?
Yeah, I mean, it's always been there, appropriated, we've had money in there, it's just.
They still have a can over at station two, you know, so they should still get billed something.
Well, yeah, they get billed for that one, but this one here is the one that, uh, I had, I questioned it before with admin. Just because they're not really making a lot of trash.
Two thousand, word. Repairs, repairs and maintenance. Was twenty-five thousand?
Yeah.
That's more than enough?
Yeah.
Leave it alone.
I think so.
Three twenty-nine, other property services, it was thirty thousand. That's more than enough, that's works, thirty thousand. Electricity, that could change, forty-five hundred, that's still fine for the situation, forty-five hundred. Water and sewer was four thousand. Okay, rems and buildings is zero, we got rid of that line, apparently. Water and sewer. Year-to-date was here. We got four thousand, that's good.
We're good.
And, uh, natural gas. Get rid of the rems and line, natural gas, where? Yeah, how does that one work for us, Denny?
What's that?
The natural gas, year-to-date last year was zero, we had seventy-five hundred in Cumberland. There was zero dollars, where's this gas, is this gas getting billed to the fire too?
It should be.
Are they donating it?
I can't answer it.
Okay.
Okay, let's just leave it.
We'll leave it, but.
Leave it for now.
These are, these are things that I'd like to follow up and. I'm sure we're paying something to somebody.
Something, yeah.
I don't see the bill for here, so. All right, numbers and pages don't quite align, so we'll go to the next page of the flash. Four hundred line, supplies and materials, that's one thousand. That looks like that's fine, one thousand.
What did you put in natural gas, Doug?
Four thousand, that's what we had it in the year before. Okay. Five ninety-nine, other expenses. It's another ninety-two thousand, I'm sure that's a.
Keep it, right?
Yeah, keep it ninety-two. That is page one. Zoning. Are you interested in taking us, or should we just go, go ahead and run with it like we've done?
Just run.
Okay, I gotcha. Compensation of zoning board.
That's, it was both the B Z A and, uh.
Both, both of them, correct?
Right.
It was twenty thousand, that appears to be plenty, twenty thousand. Salaries, fifty thousand. That one. Well, it's first quarter, it's gonna be fine. Fifty thousand. Opers. Sixteen hundred.
Would you rate one?
I don't, sure don't think so, but it looks like it.
Yeah, this was one I had a question on because it's sixteen hundred here.
We got sixteen hundred.
Eight dollars.
Yeah.
Okay.
There we go.
Now, my, my question on this one is. Why was the permanent budget at seventeen thousand for opers?
Bump it up?
See, I'm, yeah, I'm still kinda.
Oh, talking to her.
Trying to get that line, but I'm not.
Okay, just run up there.
This is the line. Okay. That's opers permanent, that's what he's talking about, seventeen thousand. Year-to-date was thirty-six hundred. In that line item last April. So. He would indicate that you want to have more than sixteen hundred in there.
Probably more like sixteen thousand.
Well, even if you had five thousand, we're not increasing things too much.
The permanent budget was seventeen thousand.
Permanent was seventeen, but year-to-date was thirty-six hundred in opers. So that, that's, I think this sixteen hundred has to go to thirty-six, or, you know, go to five thousand. We're gonna move that to five thousand for opers. Thank you. Social security. Who do we pay on social security, I mean, we got five thousand in there, that's more than enough.
You had a permit too.
Just go with it, five thousand, who, who gets social security out of our group?
I mean.
What did the zoning board members, they gotta pay something.
Yeah, there's.
They don't pay no push, right?
They have that, don't you?
Yeah, just leave it.
Okay, so we're gonna leave that, so, that two twelve line at five thousand? I'm gonna wait till I get confirmation from our department heads. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we're just. There's been fourteen hundred paid out of it so far, as of September, the last appropriation status, there was fourteen hundred paid. That's supposed to.
I think we're safe, I thought.
Okay, so we'll leave that at five thousand. Thank you. Medicare. It was five thousand. And that looks safe. Five thousand. Hospitalization. Now, that was, I'm here for eighteen thousand.
Permanent was twenty-five. What's your year-to-date expenditure on that one?
Year-to-date here was only thirty-five hundred, even with a twenty percent increase, if we go that way, eighteen thousand's still more than enough.
So just leave it.
Leave it alone.
Eighteen?
Yeah. Workers' comp. Okay, here's the line.
I have other insurance.
We have other insurance, two twenty-nine, I was just checking. I was just checking on you, make sure you're still. We had three hundred.
I'll just leave it.
Leave it alone. That's the Aflac type stuff, correct? Three hundred. Okay. Workers' comp.
Was three.
Was three thousand.
Was three.
Leave it alone.
Yep.
Three thousand. Unemployment comp was blank. Leave it blank. Legal fees. And this is for zoning, this is so that we, the hope was still to get you set up for that. Ability to. Make decisions with.
Without, yeah, with.
Without having to have extra meetings, right?
Right, so basically, some of these things in the zoning book, they're black and white. So, if they don't meet the criteria, it needs to go to an appeal. And, we were just talking about. Having it so that the, a lane would have that right to just automatically schedule them for. A zoning.
So, you don't waste the time going, because, because it's a process, but a process that's.
Right, they gotta go to the one that they know they're gonna get denied, and they gotta go to the next one, so. I mean, we have the money there, I mean, you're free to, you know, especially now if your, your department had status, you know, start if, you know. Fine tune that and present that to us, but we can, you know, if that's something that you feel that we need to do, or look at.
I know that we, um, talked about it for years. And, I don't know if it's something through Mike Lyons, something, it was with the book as well, the book had to be.
Yeah, we have to edit the, we'd have to edit the book, you know, but just with me being on the zoning board for years, way back when. I always thought it was kind of stupid, you know, it's because you're sitting there and your decision's already made for you.
But you still have to come.
But I still gotta come, yeah, even as a board member, I thought it was kinda.
If it meets the criteria of the zoning resolution, then I should be able to go ahead and write that permit for it. They don't have to, shouldn't have to be run through the zoning commission and then through the trustees, I.
Let's leave that money that was in there and hope that. We get through some of this other stuff, we can concentrate on something like that. Okay? Three thirty, travel and meeting expenses. We had four thousand, I say leave that alone. Postage. Twenty-five hundred.
I'd leave that.
Leave it alone. Printing, seven hundred.
Is there anything you're seeing that get printed?
No.
Leave it alone.
Yeah.
You know those printers are, it can get carried away on you.
Wow, it keeps going up.
Well, like the map and stuff that I had printed, that, the CPC did that for free.
It'd be more like.
Who did that for free?
CPC, county planning.
Okay.
You know.
Maybe you're supposed to give me a PDF of that.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, he just, just yesterday finalized it with the right date, he sent me three different ones, so. Okay, yeah, it's right now.
Thank you. So, the four-ten line, I believe, is office, no, we're on advertising. Advertising, we had two thousand, leave that alone.
I think so.
I think so.
Office supplies, two thousand, leave that alone. Small tools and minor equipment. Small tools, five hundred bucks, are we okay, or, I mean?
Yeah, I don't foresee anything.
Five ninety-nine, other, other. Twenty thousand.
We actually lowered that to eighteen on the permanent budget, so.
You wanna go ahead and lower it to fifteen or something? Because we didn't.
I think it's bird.
Leave it, it's, that's a catch from one, so.
Yeah, it is.
Leave it at eighteen.
Is that the one that they pay the, uh, security deposits out of? Two fifty?
Well, like, we usually will do a line transfer and, and move it to somewhere.
Okay.
Um. Yeah, I, I would think that the security. Trying to think. It would be nice to know where those come from.
I thought it was.
I'm, I'm fine with leaving it, it didn't hurt anything.
We probably lowered it to twenty because we needed to, the final, ever lowered it to eighteen, so, just leave it there.
Well, we went through the COVID thing and I wasn't, we weren't charging people during that time. So, that back and forth didn't happen.
Okay.
And people have really slowed down with that. I mean, every year's different, but.
That's my problem, I think.
We're gonna leave it at eighteen, then, that was last year's.
Permanent.
Permanent, yeah.
I'll just switch it to eighteen.
Switch it to eighteen. Okay, Bruce? Seven forty, machinery, equipment, furniture. That was just five hundred.
That would be like your desks and stuff like that.
I'm good. The new chairs and everything, good.
Five hundred.
How old is your copier?
My copier? Hmm, probably, I don't know, five to ten years old, it was a hundred and some dollars, it's not a. It's a staple special.
Training services. We had nothing, next line item was filled out was electricity. Let's see, is that the same thing here?
Yeah, we're permanent.
Yep. We had nothing, that's fire station. Technical services, electricity. Twelve thousand, and that's more than enough for what we're looking at, okay? Then, the four-ten series, the other materials, it's nothing.
Nope.
Improvement of sites, nothing.
Well, we did have that in the permanent budget. But, um. We, we had, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand in there for improvement of sites, but that's going back to just talking about. Starting to work on the properties.
Is that improvement of sites, or that's the next line item down?
That's seven thirty. I actually got two seven thirties.
I got those, uh, five, four ninety one there.
So, these are both improvement of sites. On the permanent budget.
What are you bringing in a new budget number for, I'm looking at this one here.
It's a temporary budget, but I'm just saying, it was like.
Okay.
Things that were used.
So.
I'm fine with.
Twenty-three.
So, your seven-six-zero dash seven-three, we had sixty-five thousand.
Now, the improvement of sites, the monies that we've already allocated for. The repairs going on is out of this year's budget. That's improvement of sites, right? That we are doing, your.
The painting and.
Paying and so forth.
Right, okay.
Um. It seems like we ought to put something in there, because.
Right.
We're gonna, we're gonna hopefully finish what we started.
Right.
Um.
That line, uh, the permanent budget was bumped to one hundred thousand. From the sixty-five that we have here.
Okay.
So.
Put the two fifty in?
No, but we have two fifty, a different improvement of site, six-ten. Seven-thirty was two fifty, and seven-sixty dash seven-thirty was one hundred.
Right, okay.
So, the seven-thirty line.
Seven-sixty, seven-thirty.
Seven-sixty, seven-thirty. That was sixty-five thousand, does that, is that the improvement of sites that applies to what we're looking at here?
Yeah, on the permanent budget, we bumped it to a hundred, so, but again, I think for the temporary budget to stand, you can.
Danny, are you familiar with that? The which improved, the different improvement of sites? Okay. I agree with you, we had sixty-five thousand in it before. Uh, the seven-sixty, seven-thirty. I'd say, we'll put sixty-five thousand in there again, again, that's the seven-sixty, seven-thirty improvement of sites. So, you should have, from your three-ten, three-fifty-one, electricity at twelve thousand. It should be blank all the way down to that seven-sixty, seven-thirty line, okay? Then. Improvement of sites. Room, bridge, other capital outlay. Transfers to cemetery. Uh, there, these are all zeros. And then there's a. A number to total that out, which we can do later. Okay, I mean, that, that's all that goes into the zoning at this point.
Well, yeah, it's zoning and.
Right, the one thousand series.
Right.
Okay.
Iron motor vehicle.
Alright. Motor vehicle tax, twenty-twenty-three.
So, you went from seventeen twenty-five to eighteen.
Okay, I'm kinda misplacing here a little bit.
This number here.
Okay.
That's that number, that was another last year.
Okay. So, that goes here. So, last year it was seventeen oh twenty-five, according to the certificate of resources, it's eighteen oh twenty-five. So, the seven-sixty, seven-thirty improvement of sites under motor vehicle tax, eighteen thousand. Oh twenty-five.
You're gonna put it all in there?
How's that?
You're gonna go ahead and put it all in there?
Yeah.
Yeah. It'll end up staying that way, but, okay.
What are you putting in for seven-thirty?
The seven-sixty, seven-thirty improvement of sites on the motor vehicle tax.
Right.
Eighteen thousand oh two-five.
Okay.
And that came off of the certificate of resources. Eighteen oh two-five. Gasoline tax, same way. So, we're, last year it was one eighty-eight. This year, that's that figure right there.
One ninety.
One ninety, one hundred ninety thousand, one hundred. In the. Seven-sixty, seven-thirty. One hundred ninety thousand, one hundred. That's gasoline. Improvement of sites. Roads and bridge. This is for a year, correct? This funding is for the year.
Like this one?
Roads and bridges.
Which part are you asking me to look at, this part here or? Or this temporary budget?
Well, I'm, I'm looking to work on the temporary budget, but I was trying to reference back.
Well, I'm sure it's more than that. So, on this one.
Okay. So, you don't include that.
That's, that's.
That was last year's carryover. Well, actually, that's. Carryover this year, because that's what they, this is this year's deal.
See, there's our salaries for the first three months. Under appropriation. Do you have anything right now for the study?
I'm not just from last year. Not last year.
Yeah, that's what we have here, is there any changes you think, this should be pretty close?
No. Year-to-date expenditures for. Salaries. It's just under seventy-five thousand.
So, it actually.
Ninety-five thousand should be enough, but. Did we add them in since last year?
No.
Okay. I'm gonna call that same at ninety-five thousand then. And again, that's twenty thirty-one, three-three oh, one ninety, salaries. Opers. That was twenty grand on the pop, there. Probably ought to go up a little bit, twenty-five?
Twenty-two. Oh, I didn't mean to say twenty-five.
Okay.
Eight-five?
Twenty-five. Twenty-five. Social Security was blank. Leave it blank. Medicare was seventy-five hundred. That was twenty-three hundred before, should be okay. Hospitalization, it's fifty-five thousand. We'd spent thirty-seven thousand before, even with an increase, that should still be fine, fifty-five thousand. Other insurance, seven hundred, that should be fine, that's, uh. Seven hundred. Two fifty-one. No, 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 two thirty, workers' comp, five thousand. That should be fine. Uniform. We don't pay for our uniforms out of our uniform line, correct? So, that's.
Next one's the tax collection line, what was that one, that one?
Tax collections. Forty-five hundred. That's the three-fourteen line.
We bumped it up to ten, that permanent budget, that's.
We bumped, yeah, we bumped it up to ten, we didn't have anything for year-to-date at that point.
At that point, that's why I was most hundred percent sure when that one was pulled, but. I'm fine with leaving it then.
Leaving it in at ten?
Oh, no, it was forty-five hundred.
That's what it meant, I'm sorry, I'm looking at that. Four thousand five hundred for the tax collection fees, three-fourteen. Sorry about that, I.
Yeah, you just, last year through.
What's that?
We were at fifteen.
Anything on the training, I know we had talked about some type of training.
Yeah, we were fifteen one hundred through nine months.
Three months.
All right. What do you say about training?
Keep it.
Two grand, is that enough? Two thousand? You just did a training, but it was free, right, recently?
Yes.
What was that in again?
Uh, for solving, sensible solving.
Okay, thank you. Other professional services, the three-nineteen line. Um, we had fourteen thousand in there before.
Had a hundred and fifty in there during the permanent budget.
Fourteen thousand should be.
Yeah.
Fine. Rents and leases was blank. Leave it alone.
Yeah.
Garbage and trash removal was four fifty.
That has went up.
I was just gonna say, where are we at now, because I wouldn't, I would be scared of that one.
Yeah, we better take it up, let's take it up to.
Seven fifty.
Seven hundred, probably seven fifty.
I'll go seven fifty?
Yeah. I got stunned by that.
Repairs and maintenance, we had twenty grand. Do a lot of work at that time, but leave that alone?
Yeah, leave it.
Telephone, we had six hundred. Looks like that was adequate. Eh, tight though.
Let's go up to, let's go up a little bit on that.
Let's go seven fifty on that.
Go seven fifty, is that enough?
Eight, let's go eight, yeah.
We'll go eight hundred. Advertising, six hundred.
We're gonna be going out for the bids for our cul-de-sac first part of the year. So.
Wanna make out a thousand?
A thousand on that.
Yeah, let's, you never know. Electricity, twenty-five hundred. Normally I'd say go up, but it's. Yeah, year-to-date was nearly twenty-five hundred.
I think the rates have went up a little bit, but a little bit too.
Through, through nine months, we were four thousand.
Wanna go three grand? Is that enough? He said four, nine months was four thousand, so three grand would be okay. Water and sewer was fifteen hundred. It's thirteen hundred in actual costs, so we don't wanna go down on that.
Seventeen.
Yeah, we should be okay, we were three thousand last, this year through nine.
We're gonna go seventeen hundred.
Okay.
Okay. Natural gas was six thousand. That should be all right.
Yeah.
Okay. As long as people tell you when the heaters are on high.
Yeah.
Three sixty contracted services was blank. Leave that alone? Leave that blank?
Yeah.
Okay. Three eighty-one property premiums, we had twenty thousand. Looks like that should be okay for this time. Year-to-date, we had fourteen seven, so call it twenty?
Yeah.
Those are usually all. Up front. liabilities. We had a ten thousand, and that was about eight. I think that'd be all right, too.
Yeah.
Call that ten thousand. Office supplies, one thousand. Okay.
Ryan keeps telling me my computer is about full, or whatever it is, so we might need to look at that first part of the year. Going off that to, uh. What's our computer cost?
Okay, so office supplies, we're usually one thousand.
Yeah.
But if he's, you think, if we were to get computers, that where you would pull that from?
Office supplies, I would still.
Or that'd be small equipment.
She takes that out of seven forty.
Yeah.
Yeah, leave that at a thousand then.
It makes. Okay. Four twenty line, operating supplies. We had fourteen thousand. What did we, what would that have been? Year-to-date, we had. Almost forty thousand in there. Man, wrong number. No, it's.
We, we spent, um.
I am on the wrong, yeah.
We spent sixteen thousand.
I'm on a road salt line, but there's, what's, there's another one in between here that's not showing up.
Operating supplies, I doubt, that's where I'm at.
Operating supplies.
Four twenty.
Twenty thirty-one, three three oh. Four twenty.
Four twenty, right.
Was fourteen thousand.
File appropriation was thirty.
That should be fine, I'm sorry, is that what you're seeing?
Yeah, we, we had sixteen sold, so.
All right, so we'll leave it at fourteen thousand.
Yeah.
Road salt. Operating supplies, it was at sixty thousand.
Down to thirty. Because I've only put in for five hundred tons this year, so.
So we can drop it to thirty?
Yeah, let's drop it down to thirty.
Thank you.
Can drop it to thirty?
Say thirty-five.
I still have some left last year, because this year, uh, purchase order, I'm gonna use up. First part of the year, and I'll have this to fall back on at the end of next year, so.
Okay. Where are you at, I get you caught up.
Did you change anything?
Just what's your last line?
Natural gas.
Okay, natural gas was six thousand. Then gap, nothing contracted. Twenty, ten, one thousand, fourteen thousand, thirty-five thousand. Correct. That puts us at operating supplies, fuel. We had twenty thousand.
For fuel?
Yeah. Looks like, I mean, that's, that should be good for the quarter, huh?
I haven't done a winner. Yeah. Look at it again.
We're gonna put twenty thousand there? When everything's set down, these numbers still have to work, so this is preliminary. Uh, operating supplies, uniforms.
This is our clothing allowance, that's what that is, so it stays the same in.
Three thousand should be fine, three thousand. Uh, four thirty, small tools and minor equipment, you had twenty-five hundred. Doesn't look like you spent too much in that category, is that?
Yeah, let's leave that in.
Twenty-five hundred. Five nine nine, you had twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, leave that.
Okay.
Leave that alone.
Twenty-five hundred. Improvement of sites. That was one where you put some money in, it was three hundred thousand. We wanna leave that there for now and use that?
Yeah, let's, let's leave that there.
We'll come back on that.
So I'm looking at, uh. Probably our cost is gonna be about forty-five, fifty thousand on cook, grill, casserole. Somewhere in there, that would be our portion of it, and then the. Cul-de-sac will probably be about hundred sixty-five, maybe seventy-five thousand. Give me what pushes, let's say three hundred in it.
We'll put three hundred, yes. Machinery, equipment, and furniture. I believe that was a zero. That okay, sir? Zero?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, well, we got. If that computer comes around, I'm gonna put something in there.
Okay.
I'd say put five thousand in it.
Okay. Gonna put five thousand in there?
For improvement of the sites.
Um, no, it's, it's seven forty line machinery, equipment, furniture.
Oh, okay.
Based on the.
Your permanent budget had seventy-five thousand in that one.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll probably up that again. When we do the permanent, we'll change that number.
Right, so where are we at then?
We're at five thousand. Then I got nothing for the building at Blakeslee Park or improvement of sites place in the seven thirty, is that okay then?
Yeah.
So then that should total out our. Roads and bridges. Right? For the temporary?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think we're good though.
Now we're on the cemetery.
Actually, actually, let's go back to that improvement of sites for that, is.
Yeah.
For just Blakeslee, you think that? That line at the bottom?
Well, it's funny, because that's a seven thirty improvement of sites, and if you go on the other page, there's a seven thirty. They should actually have a number before that.
Yeah, it's that seven six oh seven two oh five eight, oh five eight two.
Yeah, building Blakeslee Park, the seven sixty, seven twenty number. I've heard of the seven sixty number, it's true about. Entity. More so, and I, we had nothing in there, I don't know.
I'd like to put new heaters in that building out there, concession building.
Okay.
Just aren't cutting it. If we could put maybe twenty-five hundred in there, improvement of the sites for Blakeslee buildings.
Okay.
Then we'll talk to Angela, see if that's a good spot to take that from there. Whatnot.
And put twenty-five hundred under the improvement of sites for Blakeslee Park.
Yeah, let's do that. Thank you.
Thanks for bringing it up. And we're all about the salt number you credited us. That'll, that'll work out fine. Okay. Cemetery. Other expenses, twenty-five hundred, Danny?
Sure. Oh, we had, so this is where.
Five nine ninety, right, Doug?
Yeah. See, this is the old one. See, we had that right there. Now the new one, that's right there. I don't think you're gonna spend it, but I'm just saying.
Now, we're talking about the first quarter.
We need to put money in, in the cemetery, in case somebody sells a lot back or whatnot, so we have money there, too. You know, if somebody wants to sell a lot back to the township.
So. Should we put five grand there, is that what you were saying we had before?
Well, before we had twenty-five hundred.
Right.
And we put twenty-five hundred here. Now it's at five thousand. But I don't think we're gonna. I don't think what we'll be using, actually, under appropriation. I think it'd be safe at twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, let's do twenty-five.
Last year we had file appropriation, twenty, what we all used through nine, one thousand.
We didn't spend anything that I can see here in the cemetery.
Yeah, the certificate's got five thousand, that's all. On the permanent budget, we use that.
So where would you like to put me? Twenty-five hundred. We're gonna put twenty-five hundred under the five nine oh, is that right? For the cemetery.
What number you at, five ninety?
Five ninety.
Twenty-five hundred?
Yes.
Twenty-five hundred.
All right, we are on the twenty eighty-one line. Salary is one ninety. Chief, have you worked through some of these?
Yes, I did.
You are champion.
We could probably go off of pretty much the twenty twenty-three numbers that we had. Except for line item, uh, three seventy, payment to political subdivision, that's gonna have to be increased.
Okay. Question on the salaries, have we not added manpower? Or have we gotten rid of some of the higher end, have we got some lower end, what, how, is that why it can stay?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's for three months, right?
Right, three months.
How much was it cut down on overtime?
Well, Brett's not working the normal shifts yet, because he's still in train, but it will.
How much did we cut down on overtime? Uh, overtime actually went up a little bit.
Okay, no, I just.
Yeah.
I was telling him Brett's not even working by himself yet, so.
All right, opers. I keep that at the same, I'm gonna look real quick, I'm sure that one's the same, the other should be.
I think he said we can pretty much stay the same all the way down to the three seventy.
Okay. If that's okay, chief, I'm gonna roll with it.
Which one number?
I'm just.
We're just scrolling through those, if there's no changes, we're keeping them.
So Medicare, just keep that at thirty thousand? That's fine. And two nineteen is blank.
Two nineteen twenty?
Two nineteen, I don't have a twenty, if this is other retirement.
Yeah, it's just blank, it's always been blank, it should be gone, it should be first offer here.
Yeah, it should be. Right. Uh. Two twenty-one, hospitalization. And again, this is for three months, so. At the end of the day, we know that that very well could go up. But year-to-date, we had sixty-five, you got a hundred and twenty, you're fine, right?
Yep.
One hundred and twenty thousand.
Yeah, because we're only at year-to-date expenditures as of appropriation status, and that's twenty-eight, we're at one eighteen, so.
Yeah.
Yep, we're fine.
Other insurance, four thousand, same.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'm just verbalizing it for the record, so. Not questioning you. Workers' comp, we were at ten thousand, leave it at ten thousand?
Leave it.
Accounting and legal fees.
That one we may have to discuss.
Uh, we might. Do we wanna, he was five thousand.
I would.
Um.
Much as I hate to say it, but I think it.
Wanna go to.
I'll leave it at five thousand, we didn't spend anything last year, but.
What do you guys say?
Always procrastinate, so. That's it.
Yeah, okay, we're gonna leave it at five. Tax collection fees were at twenty thousand.
That's what it was in the permanent also.
And. First quarter, there was nothing on it, I mean, we can leave that the same, I'm sure that's what you were saying earlier, twenty thousand. Election expenses.
That's what I'm curious about, like, what the purpose of that one would be? Would that be if like, if there was something on the ballot? You know what I mean?
That may be it, if we're putting a levy on the ballot or something of that nature.
We, it, well, that would be a decision from the board, yeah.
But I mean, if we would.
If we would.
Yeah, I was just wondering about that, that line, and that's the only time I've seen that one, so I'm just curious, I'll have to ask. Question mark on that one.
But I don't think it's gonna be within the temporary, would it?
No, no.
Yeah, we'll visit at it.
Okay.
That one just, the name's jumped out at me.
So we'll leave that blank. Training services, we have it at five thousand.
That's fine.
What is this training services, CPT?
CPT is a required. That's what we get reimbursed for every year for the CPT classes, and that's why we, we never have to worry about that account, it's just.
Leave it, it was blank, leave it blank?
Yep.
Okay. Three nineteen had fifty thousand in it.
Leave it at fifty, please.
Okay. Rents and leases was nothing. Leave it at nothing, trash collection was fifteen hundred.
Should be good at fifteen hundred.
Okay. Dumb question, sir. Never mind, my straight line might not be so straight. Okay, damn. Why is that? We can leave it alone. We're leaving that at fifteen hundred. Repairs and maintenance was ten thousand, is that okay?
That's fine.
It should go down.
Travel and meetings was twenty-five hundred?
That's fine.
Make a note there, in case we need to trip, we can come back to the numbers. Telephone. Two thousand.
I would bump that up a little bit.
Oh, three thousand?
Yeah, that'd be good.
Three thousand for telephone, three forty-one line. Make sure we appropriate all of that when we get into the new year. Three forty-two, postage, five hundred, that should be fine, huh?
Yes. Postage and the advertising should be the same.
Okay.
I mean, we could probably drop advertising down to two fifty.
Want me to drop it to two fifty?
Yes, sir.
All right, three forty-five advertising is being lowered to two fifty. It's two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty dollars. Three fifty-one electricity is five thousand. Uh, that should still be okay?
Yes.
I'm asking them. Yep. Water and sewer was one thousand?
We'd go one thousand.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your help on that. Natural gas was at twenty-five hundred? Is that gonna be all right?
Should be.
Yeah, uh, for three months, yes.
Okay. Payment to political subdivision, this is generally speaking, our dispatch.
It's our dispatch.
Okay.
They had a, last year was, they had three point five percent increase in their contract. Okay, so I figured in, just to be safe, I don't know, it could go anywhere from, uh, three point five up to five percent. So I figured in five percent, so I'd like to bump that up to seventy-seven thousand.
Okay.
And that bill is, always comes, uh.
Early.
Yes.
So is that, is, is seven, is seventy-seven adequate at five percent?
Seventy-seven is.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm gonna make that seventy-seven thousand for line three seventy. Property insurance. We had ten thousand before.
Should be fine. Yes.
Yeah. Liability the same? Does that work out okay?
We did have liability fourteen.
Yeah, ten dollars for three months, that'll be fine. Liability.
Aside for the property, but liability was higher for some reason.
Is that the one that pays? I'm not sure if that's the one we, that we need to pay up front or not.
Most of them, she pays upfront.
Well, then I would.
But that one, like I said, that one showed to be over thirteen thousand, so.
Right, we, yeah, we were.
We better make that.
I had fourteen thousand five hundred on that one.
Uh, we're at thirteen thousand, two fifty-eight, year-to-date.
Make it fifteen thousand?
And make it fifteen thousand for that. We're gonna move that.
At ninety-one percent, so that means that it probably was paid upfront.
Yeah.
So I would increase that to, uh, fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand. Office supplies was twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred for first freeze.
Operating supplies, twenty-five hundred.
Same.
Operating supplies, fuel. Give me a second.
We took that out to different places.
Yeah, we put in a couple places, yeah, I think thirty thousand, I think that's what we had, for a temperer, for fuel.
Something's wrong.
Well, we must've been paying it out of the other fund.
Yeah, there's.
So, but we, we had.
Yeah, I would still throw a little bit more in, in this area though, because the other one that we used was the safety services. And we, we did knock that down a little bit, so we want, we want to be protective of that now.
Because we haven't, we haven't taken anything out of here.
Okay.
Yes, I think if you wanna leave that at thirty thousand, then we should be all right.
More.
Oh, thirty thousand for three months.
Really? Oh, forget, all right.
So we're talking the, the four twenty, no, four twenty-six hundred, right?
Yeah, four twenty-six hundred.
Thirty thousand.
Yes.
And the uniforms, four twenty-six twenty, that was twenty thousand?
Yes, and, um, that, that should, that'll be more than enough, because that is another one in March, so.
Okay. Community relations grant, that's something we finally kinda got rid of, correct?
Yes.
Four thirty, small tools, minor equipment, we had twenty-five hundred.
Should we go for three months?
Community partners was zero. Dues and fees, twenty-five hundred.
That's fine.
It seemed like it was plenty. Five ninety-nine, we had ten thousand. Leave that alone.
You could probably drop that down to five thousand.
Cause the other, that's the other, yeah, other expenses, that's. You wanna drop it to five, right? All right, we'll drop it to five thousand. This opers, we had it at zero. It's a two forty-two eleven number. Seven six oh seven thirty improvement of sites, we had twenty-five thousand dollars for that?
That was for, uh, redoing the upstairs for the women, I think.
Yeah, I think we could drop that down to ten thousand, improvement of sites.
Okay. Seven forty, machinery, equipment, furniture. That one we had at twenty-five thousand.
You could drop that down to ten thousand.
Okay. Advances out was zero. Still good. That closes the police. Funding. Rest of this page looks pretty nice, the fire department is the next series on our. Temporary budget. That's a zero, correct?
Um, yeah, on the permanent, on the temporary, permanently got something, but I don't think we need it right now.
We didn't put anything in there before. Okay. Safety services.
Let's start with safety services, let's go over to fire real quick.
Okay. We're gonna go past safety services for the moment, and go to twenty-one ninety-one series for fire.
Yeah, so, we did three, three sixty last time, I think it's gonna be three fifty. So, I would say let's leave that three sixty.
Okay, what line are you on there?
Contracted services, three sixty.
Contracted services under three sixty. We were, I mean, we, uh, yeah, line three sixty, it was three hundred and sixty thousand, you say it's gonna be maybe less?
Well, it should be three fifty.
Three hundred and fifty thousand.
I mean. I'm just wondering if we should just do that for the six thousand.
Um. Take a look here.
Twenty-one thirty.
Three sixty. This is what I have on the. Should be three forty-four. On that.
On this one?
Yeah. That line I have.
Three forty-four.
It's usually paid in January.
I'm just looking for a big number.
Maybe two twenty.
Yep.
And then three sixty.
Okay, three forty.
It should be three forty-four, five, six, one.
Yep.
That's what, okay, so then this new one will be three fifty. It'll be this number right here.
It's pretty close.
So.
Go, go ahead and make it three sixty.
This one took exactly that.
Right.
Then I think we'd be safe to take exactly that.
All right.
That way then we just zero it out after that payment, and I don't have to worry about transferring money.
Okay. So utilizing the information that we were given. We're gonna make that three sixty contracted services exactly what they tell us it's gonna be. Can you read that to me again, sir?
Three four nine.
Three hundred and forty-nine thousand.
Two six four.
Two hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Chuck, that's not LST, right?
No, this is a fire.
Remember, that went up a little bit.
This is a fire contract.
Now that you got me on the site, we can go back.
Now you can go back. So, we go back over to page eight. We really didn't take anything for police in the temporary budget. We have page eight right here.
We got two eights, that's, this could be the old one, I don't know, is this the old one or the new one?
Should be the new one.
That's the new one, okay. See how they're pretty close?
Mm-hmm, yeah, the other one doesn't even have the half, correct?
All right. So safety services, I see nothing.
Chief, are we gonna use anything out of, out of, on the temporary budget?
Not for the temporary, no, we did not.
Right, okay.
Okay.
So then, we did put. Uh, five nine nine, other expenses, we did have a hundred and eight over there. I probably, I'm just suggesting that. In case we have to.
Twenty-one ninety-one?
Yeah, five nine nine, it, we, we threw a.
Yeah, we put that in.
Just in case we had.
In the budget.
Well, we also have one in the temporary, just in case we had to move something, you know, it's in the other expenses, so it would just be there for like a relocation or something. I'm surprised us. It's, it's there.
What do you wanna put in there?
Just leave it.
What was it?
One oh eight.
Okay, help me out here. It's right here. Let's see, that's the old one.
That's still, yeah, I just gotta leave it there.
But I'm just trying to find it over here.
Which one are you, are you in the permanent or?
This is, no, I have no permanent information whatsoever, this is all temporary.
So this is.
Actually, I don't know what this is, that's eight to twelve, seventy.
You're leaving leave blank?
No, that's mine, you're, that's mine.
Okay.
We're, we're, we're up above at the one oh eight.
Oh.
See that little number is right, right there? Higher.
Twenty-three, maybe it's on this page.
Well, this is just your page you haven't filled out yet.
Well, this is twenty-twenty-three temp, right?
Okay.
Yeah. All right, I'm sorry, I switched up from one to the other and I got the papers confused. But that's not twenty-twenty-three temp. It's twenty-twenty-four temp, we'll make it up to.
Yeah, I'm just using this one, I write my numbers over here.
I'm not doing it that way, I gotta make it blank, I really gotta keep it that way, so. But this is twenty-eighty-one, so that's. This is page five, six. I would say this is seven, that's. Twenty-one eleven. Then we go to twenty-one ninety-one. I'm just having a hard time finding that twenty-one ninety-one, one eighty number.
Page eight, page nine.
AJ. You see, page eight, there's seven. Here's the PJ.
There, there on the bottom, that's what you're looking for. At five nine nine, PJ.
Yeah. Where's my PJ?
Can we have this one?
No.
I'm not using it. There you go.
Got problems, okay. So, this is PJ.
Right there's the other expenses.
Okay.
This would be that one right there.
Thank you. So, twenty-one ninety-one. Four twenty, five nine nine, other expenses, that's a hundred and eighty, a hundred and eight thousand.
Yes.
Leave it the same. I didn't mess you guys up on that, did I? Are you okay?
What, what line item was that?
Five nine nine.
Under safety services?
Yeah, twenty-one ninety-one.
Two ten?
Uh, twenty-one ninety-one, four, two ten, yeah.
Five nine nine, right?
Four twenty, five nine nine, it's, it's right at the bottom of that page?
Okay.
It's at the bottom of page eight?
Yeah.
Good, all right. All right. So P is gone. That's there.
All right, so the next one will be the other pressure on technical.
This is from, this isn't mine, right? That might be from you. So now we're at twenty-one ninety-nine, two twenty, I read.
Okay, now, I think I got stung on that one last year. Um, because this is where like, all hazmat and all that stuff comes from. Um, so look at the appropriation, will be stuck.
This is fire. All right.
Right here.
Oh, yeah, this is, this is that. This is that one. That's it.
Yeah, I see. So I wanna, I wanna bump that one up.
Okay, so this is the, uh, twenty-one ninety-one, two-twenty, three nineteen, right?
Yeah, at least ten.
We're gonna make that ten thousand. We're bumping it up from previous, but based on last year's year, year-to-date through April.
I think I got stung on that one, so.
You guys got that then? Okay. Rents and leases, nothing? Garbage trash removal, we had five hundred.
Yeah, I think we were like three something last time.
Gotta leave that alone. Repairs and maintenance.
Leave that.
We were at two grand.
Repairs and maintenance are at two grand.
That should be fine.
Yeah.
We're at two, two hundred. That's electricity, is what you're on there.
Electricity has four thousand.
So, leave that at three grand, repairs and maintenance. Well, was two thousand, that's what I'm trying to say. It's, that should be fine. Three twenty-three, repairs and maintenance, two thousand. Telephone. Was four hundred, that should be okay. Electricity.
We had forty-five hundred.
We were at forty-five hundred. That looks like that should work. Four thousand five hundred. Water and sewer. We were at twenty-five hundred.
Hmm, might go up a little bit more.
We should, might go up like twenty-seven fifty or three thousand.
Three.
We're gonna go to three thousand for water and sewer. Natural gas.
That's three, we're on twenty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred, we should be okay.
Yeah.
Leave that at thirty-five hundred. Alright.
Contracted services.
We just talked about the contracted services.
Since I had written down.
Three hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-four.
Two six four?
Yeah, two six four. Three four nine, two six four. Medical payment to a subdivision, we were at zero. At five thousand last year. What would you pay for that line?
Alright, so which one is that?
It was, uh, three seventy?
What was our year-to-date expenditure on that one? For some reason, I felt like there was something.
It was zero here.
Yeah, but I'm.
Oh, up to, to our last one? You got it there, Bruce?
Yeah, three seventy, damn.
Twenty-one ninety-one, three seventy?
Yeah, but has, we have nothing on that on the permanent budget.
Nothing. We did nothing here last year. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't.
No, I, I, I think that might be one that's not used.
Right.
Cause there is another, there's another three seventy down lower.
Leave that blank?
I guess so.
You haven't used it? Property insurance premiums. That's our three eighty-one. This one was nineteen thousand. Actually, it's.
Yeah, it's high.
Not, not far off.
We stay the same? Or, I mean, you're within a thousand, I don't know. You go to twenty?
Yeah, let's go to twenty. Twenty thousand for property insurance premium, like three, two, yeah, three eighty-one.
Yeah.
Liability.
Just put eight on that one.
We were at nine. We spent eight.
Go to ten?
Go to ten. Ten thousand.
Do you want one of those candies?
You know, it's, um, gotta go. Better not be getting these sick.
You're the one that has.
Christie says, whatever you do, stay away from this table.
What did you put in, nine for the, uh?
Ten.
For the insurance grant rooms.
We put in, for the, uh, property, we put in twenty.
Yeah.
And liability, we put in ten.
Ten.
Operating supplies, we didn't have very much. We had five hundred, we didn't use any. Leave it five hundred?
Hmm.
Small tools and minor equipment. Again, we.
We did use a little bit there. Uh, did we use anything at that time?
We didn't use any in the first quarter. We didn't have anything there. We spent something, we must have moved it over.
I would, I would, yeah, I would put a little bit, put like a thousand bucks in there.
Nothing in, in the first nine months.
Yeah, but that one.
What would, what would small tools and minor equipment be for in a fire? Nowadays, I don't know.
Yeah.
Have to put something in there.
We'll put a thousand in there. Dues and fees.
Nothing.
Nothing. Other expenses, the five nine nine. Right, a thousand?
Yeah.
Okay, thousand dollars.
And that's it. On that one? On that page, that's it. Oh, my page. Tax collection fees would be the next one.
Okay. Next one is, what's the next line item on that?
I got two nine zero, there's three one four.
Tax collection fees. That's the two ninety dash three one four, tax collection fees. What do we have in there before?
I had five grand in there before.
We didn't spend any there. You want to just leave it in there at five?
I guess so.
Land, fire department. Got nothing?
Um, I had, yeah, next one that I have something in is building, fire department.
Yeah, buildings. Fire department, we had six thousand. Would that be for things like the floor? Did that floor ever get done? No? Okay.
Nope, I'll just leave it in there.
Leave it in there at six thousand.
And that's the last one.
That's the last one on that. Twenty-one ninety-one, sa- safety services?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Permissive motor vehicle license tax.
I just put this number right there.
How's that?
Just put that number right here.
Alright. We have ninety-five thousand one hundred provided to us. That's what we're gonna put under.
Permissive.
The improvement of sites. Ninety-one thousand one hundred. That's right off the certificate, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
What was that number?
Ninety-one thousand one hundred. Ninety-five thousand one hundred.
Ninety-five thousand one hundred.
Thank you. Ninety-five thousand, Bruce. Ninety-five thousand one hundred, I told you you're wrong.
It's.
Law enforcement trust.
So this one, I don't think we collect anything or do anything with it, but for some reason, there was a balance left in that account. And that's the five sixty-four seventeen. So sooner or later, it needs to be transferred and, and zeroed out. We brought this up for the four years that I've been here. But, um.
Is that a question?
How to do that.
I did find out about that and it can be used for pretty much, uh, whatever we want it to be used for.
I, I just think it'd be good to use it up just to get, you know, five hundred bucks.
I think it'd be good for some community outreach, uh, supplies and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, even your annual meeting or whatever, so. Yeah, just, we'll make a point to try to look into using that this year.
Do you want me to put that amount in there that's what's left or just leave it? It's gonna show up.
It's on the certificate too.
That's what we're looking at.
It wasn't put in the permanent budget, it wasn't on the temporary budget, it's never been. I just don't know with that one, it's.
Where's it here? Right here?
It's on, no.
It's on the certificate. You know, with Angela being here, I, I couldn't even answer.
I think it's in there, check under twenty-eighty-one, so. I thought we spent that, but that's the five sixty-four sentences.
Yeah, and that's been like that for years. Yeah, all my old certificates. I don't even worry about it in the permanent budget. I put zero for now.
I'm gonna put zero for now. We can put it back on the permanent budget, maybe buy that and get some assistance to qualify what we can use that for. Alright, that finishes page ten. Take a break, we're too close to the, uh. Rescue plan. Through the twenty-two seventy-three. We have a balance in there. Yeah, that's two hundred and fifty-five. Absolutely not. Looks like we started off with, at five ninety-seven and change. We spent three sixty-five and change. Leaving about a hundred and sixty thousand unencumbered.
The only thing that we used early on, we used almost a thousand bucks in professional one technical services. What's funny is my, it's a free budget from last time, didn't have anything on that.
Probably because we weren't planning on spending anything out of it in the first quarter. I think we had that conversation.
I think we had a root money.
And we're, I mean, we don't have to spend anything out of it on the fir- on the first quarter here. We don't want to.
I would just put twenty-five.
I think we got about a hundred and sixty in there.
Two hundred and fifteen. What's telling me?
Where do you see two fifteen? Two sixteen. Okay, well, that one ought to be right. That's coming from the county outside of us, right?
I'm just wondering. It's just these. So you just put a question mark there and you can look at that. I mean, if anything, I would just put twenty-five hundred back in there, professional and technical services.
The three nineteen line?
Like, I don't know for sure, so right now, I'm saying leave it blank.
Leave a blank for the question?
Put a question mark for that one.
So not put anything in for that line?
Who is the two-ten, three-nineteen? Is that, that's you, that's police, right?
Two-ten, three-one, and yeah.
Yeah, so I don't think we need to use anything out of that. So just leave it blank. I don't know why we did, but.
The main thing is, we have till the, the end of December to spend it.
Right.
That's, that's the key. So, I mean.
Once, yeah, once, once we.
Now, is there a place you could put it so you can be allocated if you wanted for something that we ought to put in? If you don't put it in there, it's not accessible, correct?
Not in the permanent budget. Once it's marked.
That's the line, my concrete repairs came out of, too, remember? Forty-some, forty thousand dollars, but it don't, it don't reflect on that appropriation status we do have, so. That's forty thousand.
I mean, we did hit it pretty hard this month here.
Yeah.
Cause we went down, I think from five ninety-seven, I think we're at two fifteen now.
Right, I think, yeah, I did, I did my call to sex with it. I think that all came out since this was there.
Since this, yeah, so I say we just wait to the new appropriation.
Okay, so.
I think we can put off on that.
We'll put off on that. Last part here, fire and rescue.
No, it's LST.
Is this LST?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That says fire and rescue ambulance and EMS, that's LST.
So, I don't know when the tax collection fee comes out. What was the tax collection fee on that one?
It's right here, right? Yeah, three, two, thirty.
Should be the top one.
Year-to-date was twenty-seven hundred. That was through the end of September.
I think you're plenty safe at ten.
Yeah, it's safe at ten. I'm gonna put ten thousand. Now we're at the LST, two thirty, three fourteen, on tax collection.
And then what was the?
Contracted services was five twenty-eight, three hundred. Now, is that based on their forty thousand a month plus numbers?
Yeah, we've been over. What was the last bill that we just got, guys? When did you look at, did you look at the price?
In between.
I thought it said thirty thousand.
That's cheap. That's my bill's price.
That's, well, it goes up and down, cause we were above forty on the last one.
It's right here, yeah.
Yeah, I gotta sign it, that's why.
At that meeting today, didn't we go up about three percent?
They went up in September. I mean, if, if we leave that five twenty-eight, we're fine.
Oh, that's way more.
Yeah, that's what I just did last time, I just threw that in.
You just call five hundred or you wanna get to five twenty-eight, three hundred? We're gonna leave that as is.
Thirty thousand eight eighty-two.
Yeah, so that's a nice mark compared to the other one.
Yeah.
Contracted services, two thirty, three sixty. We're gonna put that in like the, same as we had it.
Last year.
Last year, five hundred twenty-eight thousand three hundred. Last year, five hundred twenty-eight thousand three hundred. And that. Should complete page twelve of twelve. So. Gentlemen, if it's okay with you, I would say that this part of the meeting for this, I don't intend, you know, let's go ahead and take these, add them up. We'll come back and do another session and finalize everything. Is there anything we need to ask, you know, in between now and then as far as we wanna get answers on?
Oh, again, we've always, we've always talked about the other expenses. I know we usually put them in there just in case we had to move something, but that was really the only question I had, and then of course, you know.
We'll have to make sure it fits the certificate.
Yeah, but you know, the election expense, one I was curious about in the future, and then um. Just like coronavirus, really important.
Okay.
Nothing major.
So, if today's the sixteenth. Should we go ahead and schedule another meeting for?
On next Thursday.
Yeah, you have fun. Bring the chicken, I mean turkey. The following week. I'm gonna be out of town for the most part. But you don't need me to do this, but the week after Thanksgiving, I'm gonna be.
Another day, it's only up through Christmas.
I'm just trying to look at this and say, you know, we should schedule another meeting for this purpose.
How long are you gonna be gone for?
I'll be back in town after the first, I think, I got a funeral on the Thursday.
Okay.
Chances are.
Okay, so you're gonna be back somewhere for a second, wherever, okay. And, and Chuck, you're leaving on the fourteenth, fifteenth, something like that?
Yeah, I think the sixteenth, maybe. Yeah, I'm leaving like fifteenth to the sixteenth. Either late or early one of those days.
Fourth is a Monday. We got a township meeting on the seventh, that must be a regular meeting.
Yeah, fourth or the eleventh.
What's, what's best that week outside of that Thursday? You wanna shoot for something on, Mondays are always bad, but unless you wanna make it Monday.
Oh, yeah, I know a meeting too, that again, discuss.
How's that?
We have another meeting on Wednesday.
Wednesday?
No, I'm saying we have another meeting this next Wednesday, we don't take a decision right the second.
Right, we're uh. Kinda limited on the topics on Wednesday, aren't we?
No, it's a trustees meeting.
It's a special meeting.
It's a regular meeting, a regular trustees meeting.
It's a regular trustees meeting because.
Okay.
Thursday is, it's getting.
Alright, I'm sorry.
We put that one on the calendar.
Alright, so that's.
But yeah, I'm just, just for reference.
That's the sixth?
What's one, next week?
The one, yeah.
Twenty-second.
Okay, I'm way off, I'm way off, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm in December, I'm looking for after we get back, so. What works, what are you thinking about? Go ahead and tell me.
Mondays are good for me.
I can make Mondays good. Are you gonna be in town on the fourth? I would do something like we're doing today, try to get in here earlier.
Yeah.
Like a.
I'm here.
You're here? You're here?
Maybe, but that's as long as we got two here, cause I, I gotta, I, I haven't seen my daughters in four years.
I'll be out of town, I'll be in Michigan.
Yeah, I think we're pretty much done with yours anyway for most part, I don't think we really. There's only, I mean, there's really only a few questions, so.
Okay. So we'll set it up for Monday, December fourth at, what, three o'clock or three thirty?
Three thirty.
Three thirty? Well, we may tweak the. The agenda as we get closer, okay, but. We'll have a meeting for.
Make the motion.
Like to make a motion to have a special meeting Monday, December fourth at three thirty. To be held here at the administrative, administration building. Part of the agenda to work on our tax budget. Temporary, thank, thank you. Our temporary budget for twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Eastwood?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Christopher?
Okay, so, temporary budget discussion's done, enough. Thank you. All right. That still beats a six and a half hour deal. Council payable police department, HSA discussion and approval. That portion of the meeting, we do not have the opportunity to discuss further at the moment. Uh, we wish our fiscal officer to get better and heal, she's not feeling well. Um, the appropriation status is the next item, report discussion and approval, there again. She's not well and was not able to forward that information to us, so. Uh, we are gonna hope that she does get well and that she can forward that over, so we can give that to our department heads and have some updated information to work with. Certified purchase orders, discussion and approval, Danny, you, you were able to get some approvals or some, some, what, how did that work? You got something by.
I talked to her on the phone and I got a couple of numbers.
So you were able to get something.
She gave you P O numbers, right?
Moved forward with a couple of things, but I'm waiting on another one, so.
Has she done any P Os for us? None?
Just HSA, I believe.
Did the HSAs get processed?
The checks, you mean?
No, I think we just signed.
There's P Os, yeah, you just signed them.
Okay.
There's two, but the other ones from since nine twenty-eight. Actually, I, I don't know if yours I've done. Are you the followers?
Do you s- we got two, two done, but we still need one, is that what I'm hearing?
For me, yeah.
Okay. So, we're gonna, again, wish her well and hopefully we'll be able to get that information. Health insurance discussion. We, we got introduced to another agent who had a plan. I think he's talked to me individually, has he talked to you?
Yes.
He's talked to you? My understanding is he's promoting it as if it's got comparable coverage, he doesn't feel we have any holes in it. Some differences that I see that he's talked to me about, and he wants to come, but I didn't know how late tonight would be, I didn't really wanna blow it in here. But. He feels that there will be a significant savings to the township without holes in the coverage to the employees. There will be a potential for a discounted contribution from the employees, so instead of a fifteen percent, maybe we could offer a ten percent contribution. So it could save the employees money. The H R A portion of the. Agreement, the way I understand it, is instead of. An HSA setup like we have it where there's money directly deposited and the people can use that as they see fit. It would be an H R A credit card that they could use as they needed it, however, at the end of the year. If there was a balance left, that comes back to the township and they reload it every year, so. In essence, currently the HSA setup where people can, if they don't need it or don't use it, take that money on and roll over. And so that would be a benefit in theory that the staff would lose. But. I think that, I think it's getting close to the end of the year, I think we need to give it an honest thought, and I'm, I. I'm still not sure what our obligations are with the O P B A.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, yeah, definitely you'd have, that would have to be negotiated or possible addendum.
If we were trying seriously to make this, present this to them, that'd be something where.
I just, I'm, I'm starting to think, hey, the time's getting tight on this thing.
Tight, there's no question.
Also, if we do switch, I think every single employee would have to go through that online. What's that thing called again, the?
Foxfire.
Foxfire process, we'd have to cross-reference the O P B A contract. Because if they want, I mean, if it's in the contract, that's, you know, they're partly have to stay the same, you could change the other people.
I don't wanna change part of them, I want it all.
So, but, I mean.
And then maybe something that next year can be negotiated.
About is the fact that there is another plan out there that looks like it will save us money, so we're not stuck in this grandfather thing, and we're not held, I don't wanna say hostage, but.
Well, and I believe it.
If they keep bumping it up, it's, they're just gonna price us, price us out of it.
I believe, I believe we'd actually stay with medical mutual, our group number would stay the same. None of that changes. And so the other aspect is the obvious, if this guy can do it.
Yeah, why are you sure?
Can I talk to Mark?
Yeah, that's what I would say, say, hey, this is a plan that we have on the table, you know.
Just because of the scenario we're in, should I make a motion to, allow me to talk to Mark on behalf of the board? Okay, I like to make a motion to allow myself to Mark, talk to Mark Hurwick, Homestead Insurance. In regards to the health insurance package and how it might be altered, compare it to another package we've been presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Roll call.
Mr. Eastwood?
Aye.
Mr. Christopher?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Okay. Offices discussion. This week, there were two people from the prosecutor's office that came and helped get as much production as we've gotten out of here in a long time. With a uh. Public records. I don't think advertising papers not, didn't prove beneficial. It was brought up to me by outside sources to talk about Indeed or something like that, another platform. Um, I have talked to the bar, they're not, they have no interest in supporting it or helping. As a association, if you find somebody, that's great, but. Still looking at feeling out for paralegal associations and so forth, but what do you think? I, I had a negative experience with Indeed. Mostly because it was years and years ago. I'm just getting started and I got blitzed with all kinds of applications and ended up getting charged for them, even though ninety-nine percent of them were not what I wanted. So, probably my fault in how we made the process out. It's come a long way and I think people involved in putting it together would be uh much better than I was back in the day. What do you think about something like that?
I did not do well with Indeed on my side, so. We just come in, now you know what they're getting themselves into. I mean, the only way to do it is advertising paper and online, even put it on the Facebook page. There is actually a thing on Facebook that you can advertise. You know, there's a, there's an option.
I'm not on Facebook, so I don't know. I have no idea.
Probably a good thing.
There, there's two areas.
I thought you were on Facebook.
There's two areas we have to, you know, really catch up on, and we had talked about Stephanie coming in months ago. That got sidetracked with Kim, et cetera. If she were to come in, even if she would have done one a week, minutes, we'd have sixteen, you know, weeks done. So I'd like to, you know, discuss the next, next time, you know. You know, set up an executive session real quick, just about compensation for the person. And see if we can come to an agreement, cause we gotta do something, we gotta get, we gotta get one of them moving, if not both, we have to get both moving, but.
So I'm, I'm hearing some mixed signals as far as maybe not, I, I really, as much as my experience hasn't been good on Indeed, I think we have to try it. It seems like a lot of people, or something like that. We did approve and initiate a conversation with a temp service, but the, the service people they had, I could go back and contact them again. A prosecutor had given us. Counsel that that would be an okay way to pursue it, pursue it. I wasn't impressed with the people who got nominated, so I kinda like back in that same boat. And, and forgive me, but if somebody has, and I'm maybe not, I've had other people explain this, it's not a fault-proof mentality, but. If you're working somewhere new every six or eight months, it's not a positive thing. But there are reasons why people move, it's not always because it's their, their problem, so I probably cut, cut that mentality short. Call it what you will, I, I'm just, I'm running out of. Options. I guess I'd like permission to work with Chrissy, and Chrissy will take one more thing on her plate with me. And see and look into the. Indeed. Platform. And uh. If we got money in our advertising that we'll pay for, that's, that's where it would get paid for, right? So as long as we could make sure that we could fund it properly. Work with somebody to. To see what we can come up with in that department, I'll still.
It's not a complicated position, I mean, it's just looking for, just. I'm fine with it, I mean, we've already kind of approved looking at any means, so what if you wanna do, just amend the, a resolution to. Find some variety of things to advertise on and go for it, I don't think you have to name it by name.
No.
Do it by online services and.
So help me with putting that in words, so we can get that done and get out.
Make a motion to continue our search for an office assistants through digital and print media. That should cover everything.
Was Stephanie already, having done almost everything that we're looking for over Rodsworth? And she's doing the minutes now, she's familiar with the zoning, things like that, they still say we should at least give her a shot, bring her in.
I respect, I respect for her to do the minutes or anything, you, are you saying that you want her as an office assistant too?
She's not able to take on the bulk of the work we have, so I'm not, I'm not saying she can't help for something, but that shouldn't get in the way of what we're doing here. And I did have a conversation with her, her time is extremely limited, so.
Right, and she told me that, but if you're doing the minutes, you can do the minutes at all.
What I think Bruce is saying is, right now we got nobody. So for right now, plug her in somewhere i- i- on her free day and um. You know, have her either work on the minutes or the.
She's not gonna, she does, wants nothing to do, let me make it perfectly clear, she wants nothing to do with the public records request, so that's not an option.
Okay.
Okay.
But we.
The, the records are, the, the minutes are something that she could do, however, we're concerned we already have somebody hired for that, that I'd like to be able to utilize. But we're having a problem with communication between. You know, it's, it's a, it's an unfortunate circumstance, and I don't wanna lose that person.
None of us do.
And so my, my fear is.
None, none of us do.
Where do we go, you know?
But right now, we've got two things that we've gotta do.
I'm, I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that she can't do something, but, and we can talk to her more about that, but let's, let's stay, let's stay on the course of. Why don't you make that motion, it sounded pretty good.
I did, now I gotta do this with a second.
Second.
Alright.
You have a roll call?
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood?
Aye.
Mr. Christopher?
Aye.
I just declared it was basically a motion to use digital and, and printed, so it could be, I can include magazines, newspaper, online services like Facebook, Indeed, there's a couple other ones.
Okay.
So.
Well, please, the board, anything else to talk about? And I would make a motion to adjourn today's meeting.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Eastwood?
Aye.
Mr. Christopher?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Today's meeting is adjourned, it's five forty P M, thank you. Where did that come from? Is that a second?
I have the air.
Do it again.